Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, February the 19th, 2019. We welcome you. We're glad you're here today. I hope you didn't get too wet on the way in. This all sleet that all of a sudden decided to come in here, I hope it goes away. We're getting ready to travel to Raleigh when we leave here tonight, so we're kind of hoping it's not going to be there. But we welcome you here this evening. As we get started, as we always do, we will rise just a minute for our moment of silence, and we'll remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. As we go to this time of silence, we will, again, please keep our officers and those who are always in harm's way in your thoughts and prayers. We had a couple of accidents over the last few weeks, and I'm glad no one was injured, and everyone seems to be doing fine, but we'll keep those families in our thoughts and prayers. And please continue praying for our City Council. As we bring in a new city attorney, we're going to need all the help we can get.
We're in deep breaths.
If you would, please join us in a moment of silence and a pledge.
We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, our first order of business is the oath of office. And we'll ask the Honorable Richard S. Holloway, District Court Judge of Judicial District 25. He will administer the oath to the Honorable Timothy J. Rohr for this office of city attorney.
I did this just so you'd have to call me Honorable.
How's your say?
And my mom's going to hold Bible for me. I guess I should hold Bible. Which one do you want me to?
Please place it here. I saw someone was holding it.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, you tell us what you're doing. Okay, Steve. This is my son, that's why.
Just speak loudly.
Okay. Ah. There you go. Please repeat after me. I state your name. I, Timothy J. Rohr. So I only swear that I will support the Constitution. So I only swear that I will support the Constitution. And laws of the United States. And laws of the United States. That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance. That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance. To the State of North Carolina. To the State of North Carolina. And to the constitutional powers. And to the constitutional powers. And authorities which are or may be established. Which are or may be established. For the government thereof. For the government thereof. And that I will endeavor to support. And that I will endeavor to support. Maintain and defend. Maintain and defend. The Constitution of said state. The Constitution of said state. Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. Aye, state your name. Aye, Timothy J. Rohr. Further swear that I will execute the duties of the office. Further swear that I will execute the duties of the office. Of city attorney. Of city attorney. For the City of Lenore. For the City of Lenore. North Carolina. North Carolina. To the best of my ability and judgment. To the best of my ability and judgment. So help me God. So help me God. Congrats.
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank Judge Holloway for agreeing to administer the oath, and for my family for being here. They're already hitting the road. See, the weather is bad. Either that, or they've seen enough, I don't know. And I wanted to thank the council and the mayor and manager for your confidence in me, and also thank Ed for the service he's provided the city for 25, 27 years?
Twenty-six something.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years, two months.
Twenty-six years, three months. And I've already heard from city staff that they really appreciated the job that you've done as city attorney, and I hope to carry on that tradition. Thank you for what you've done. And again, I appreciate your support in me. I look forward to getting back up there. I promise not to vote no even under my breath or anything. Everything you do is A-OK by me now.
All right. That's good to hear.
Could you say that one more time?
It's already being recorded. You've got it. That's enough. I'm saying it once. Thank you.
Charlie, did you get that in a minute, by the way? Thank you.
And I checked with Ed. I'm going to stick around even though I'm done. It would look bad for me to just wander out now, so.
Wait, are you going to be charging us for this?
No, I'm not going to. This is the only time, only time, I'm not charging you. No, no, I'm not going to sit there. Eventually, I'll swap that out and sit over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we talk about that?
Let me quickly tell you about, we do have a joint reception that will be coming up on Tuesday, March 5th, from 4:00 p.m. to 5:30. That'll be before our City Council Meeting of March 5th. This will be to honor Mr. Ed Blair and Mr. T.J. Rohr for their service. T.J. on the City Council for 15-plus years, as he keeps.
Fifteen years and two months.
Fifteen years and two months, and Mr. Blair for 26 years and three months as our city attorney, and we will be honoring them on that special night before our meeting. So if you would like to attend, we'd love to have you. We'll begin presentations around 5:00 to honor them, so thank you very much. And we'll be talking more about all those things at that time, so. Appreciate everything you guys have done to this point. Mr. Blair, I guess this will be the last time you sit in that official seat right there, so this is another epic special night tonight, so we appreciate that very much. Okay, we will then now move to, we have a presentation tonight to honor our Rotary Clubs, and I'm going to walk down to the podium, and we have a proclamation to present tonight. I'll ask the President of the Lenore Rotary Club, Mr. Paul Brandonberg, and the President of the Caldwell Rotary Club, Mrs. Courtney Wright, if they will come forward. And I would like to present this proclamation to you, and this is for Rotary Day 2019. Whereas Rotary was founded in 1905 in Chicago, Illinois, as the world's first volunteer service organization by Attorney Paul Harris. Obviously, Paul Harris Fellow is named for that. And three business associates for the purpose of developing acquaintance as an opportunity for service. And whereas Rotary Today is comprised of 1.2 million business and professional leaders in over 200 countries and over 32,000 local Rotary Clubs dedicated to providing humanitarian service and to helping build goodwill and peace. And whereas through the Rotary Foundation, Rotary International is the largest private provider of international student scholarships, helping over 1,000 students annually. And whereas the City of Lenore is home to two outstanding Rotary Clubs, the Rotary Club of Lenore, founded in 1930, and the Caldwell Rotary Club, founded in 1982, which together contribute thousands of dollars to the community each year through their service endeavors. And whereas Rotarians seek to direct their service in six areas of focus: peace and conflict prevention resolution, disease prevention and treatment, water and sanitation, maternal and child health, basic education and literacy, and economic and community development. Now therefore, I, as Mayor of the City of Lenore, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, February 23rd, 2019, as Rotary Day 2019 throughout the City of Lenore and Caldwell County, in recognition of the service and contributions of Rotarians to the well-being and betterment of our community and the world. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. I'll present this to you, Paul, and this to you, Courtney, and thank you very much. We appreciate all that you do. If you would, want to say anything, tell us about some projects. And Courtney, you also, as well. Thank you.
Well, if you just picture Paul Harris in a back office with three of his friends, and they're saying, "You know, what would happen if we got some community leaders together and a few professional people? Do you think we could do some good for our community?" Because he was a farm boy, became a lawyer, and now he's in the big city, and it's very different. And they said, "We ought to look at doing that." But I don't think they could possibly have imagined just those three fellows with Paul Harris working together would come up with an organization that lasted as long as Rotary has lasted, done as much good as it's able to do, and to carry that all forward. As it was growing rapidly, though, one of the best Paul Harris quotes is, he says, "No matter what Rotary means to you, we're really only going to be known by what we accomplish." And so I want to thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation, because that falls in right in line that it helps us be recognized for what we accomplish, and it's truly aligned. So we thank you very much for that. It gives us the opportunity to get the word out for all of the good things that we're doing. Greatly appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Courtney?
Thank you. Mayor Givens, thank you. Council members, thank you so much for recognizing what Rotarians do here in Caldwell County and the City of Lenore. I'm going to give a little shout-out to the Caldwell County Rotary. We are the earliest-meeting Rotary Club in the world. We meet at 6:44 a.m. on Tuesdays at Clarence's Friendly Lunch. We are a group of individuals throughout the county who really just work to do something to make this community and our world a little bit better each day. So if you are available on Tuesday mornings early, we would love to have you join us. And again, thank you so much for recognizing this day, and we look forward to giving back to the City of Lenore and doing some work to help the city become an even better place for people to work and live. Thank you.
Let's get a picture.
I'm shocked about that. Another 6:44. I thought that was just coming.
Of course, if you missed, Paul, you were at 12:15. 6:44, Mayor.
Mayor, may you.
We propose the mayor to be.
Mayor, I propose you to be 6:44.
I was a charter member. Actually, I was a charter member of the Caldwell Club for many years, and finally, 6:44 just got a little too early. You know, it's hard to get through and then get to the business at that time, but great clubs. Thank you. You know, the Rotary Club of Lenore was one of our first sponsors of Little League Baseball here in 1952. One of the original six teams that were formed, and it was all our civic organizations that sponsored that, and Rotary, actually, it was only four at that time. It was Rotary, Kiwanis, Optimus, and Lions were the four original teams in 1952 that started Little League here. So we appreciate that.
I played for Rotary.
You played for Rotary. There you go.
1952. Maybe 1970.
Yeah, we've had some great programs, so thank you for all the support that Rotary -- we have a great Rotary Christmas Festival that is done each year. I'm not sure how many years we've done that now. Kaylin, I don't know if you've done that, but it's been five or six, seven, eight? I don't even know. We've had it several. So anyway, it's been great, and we appreciate the partnership that we have with these great clubs, so thank you very much for that. Okay, we will move now to matters we have scheduled for public hearing. Tonight, we have an ordinance for the Historic Preservation Commission. This hearing will be held to consider adoption of a Historic Preservation Commission ordinance to establish the Lenore Planning Board to serve as the Lenore Historic Preservation Commission. This ordinance is proposed at this time in order to establish the legal framework for future requests for local landmarks and/or districts which may help with long-term planning and redevelopment goals for key historic properties. I will now open the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning this ordinance or ask any questions. Ginny Wheelock, our Planning Director, is here, and she can answer any of those, but this is something we have been working on, putting together for a good little bit, that we wanted to have. So we have so many properties that are now historic and are becoming vital parts, or have been vital parts of our city, and are now, we're putting this together to be able to help in those situations as we move for economic development across the city and county. So seeing no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing and ask the council for any discussion and/or motions concerning this ordinance.
Just the application and the makeup of the membership consists of planning board members?
Yes.
So it is the entire planning board? Is that correct?
Yes, it'll be the entire planning board that will serve as the historic commission to it.
I have other questions.
This is exciting to have that committee or that board being local to where we have control and over it, and just to kind of walk through those processes, so it's going to be a great addition, so looking forward to it. I'll make a motion to approve if there's no other discussion.
To remove the ordinance for the commission, okay? I have a motion from Councilmember Thomas to approve the ordinance for the Historic Preservation Commission as presented. If no other discussion, I will call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We know this will be something that will be a key factor for us in the years to come. Thank you all for being with us this evening. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda items, which consist of minutes of the City Council Meeting of Tuesday, February 5th, 2019, minutes from the Joint City Council and ABC Board Meeting of Tuesday, February 12th, 2019. We have a resolution for item C, which is MS4 Stormwater Program. This would be submitted resolution as requested by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, which is DEQ, in order to demonstrate the City of Lenore's commitment to take the necessary steps to comply with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which is the NPDES, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4, requirements of the Clean Water Act. And item D is a resolution for Hotel Street and Market Street. This will be a resolution accepting the construction of Hotel Street and Market Street as complete and dedicated for public use, including rights-of-way, underground utilities, stormwater, drainage systems, curbs, curb and guttering and sidewalks. So that's the four items on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? If not, we need another.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented.
I have a motion for Councilmember Stevens to accept the consent agenda items A through D as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. We'll now move on to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone in the audience tonight who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. You can't speak. And seeing no one, then we'll move on. We do not have any reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of our city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, council, a couple items for your information this evening. The planning board will meet on Monday, February 25th, 5:30 in these chambers. Also, the committee as a whole will meet on Tuesday, February 26th, at 8:30 a.m., 3rd floor, City Hall. And then the Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, February 27th, at noon. That'll be at the airport. And as the mayor mentioned briefly before, the reception on March 5th honoring Mr. Blair and Mr. Rohr will be held at 4:00 to 5:30 in these chambers, with the, I guess, presentation of honors to them will be at 5:00 with that, so that's for information. Tonight, we have several items for council action. The first is a contract agreement with Mueller Systems for our water meter program. At this time, I think we're going to call Andy Honeycutt to go back and give an overview in Radford Thomas. If you guys want to come on up, and I think Rafferty's going to introduce it, and I think then Andy's will give a presentation on the project.
Good evening, everyone. You're very familiar with Andy Honeycutt by now. We're glad to have him with us tonight. After quite a long period of time of vetting and investigating and understanding how all of this new metering system will work for us, we're finally to the point where we've settled on a solution for our metering, for our utilities. And Andy is here with us tonight. He's going to just refresh some of the things that we've discovered through this process, do a little presentation for you, and then if we have any questions further, then we'll take some questions.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Hildebrand, Mr. Blair. It's great to be back with you and share a little more about the project that the city staff and our company have been working on since September of 2017, I think is my name. One of the things I think that you as leaders of the community want to ensure for your customers and your citizens is that projects such as this have been thoroughly considered, have been evaluated, due diligence has been performed, and that at the end of the day, you're making good investments of public dollars. And I can assure you that the work that your staff has done in concert with us over the last year and a half has gotten us to the point where that due diligence has been thoroughly done. So we're excited to bring to you our recommendations to move forward with implementation, and it's a really exciting time for the technology for the city. Just a few slides to share with you the process. We did go through a very thorough procurement process, and we had five responders, five qualified bidders respond to the RFP. Now, this followed a feasibility study that took about eight months. And in that feasibility study, the study showed that properly designed AMI technology will yield a payback to the city in about nine years. So typically, utility investments are stranded cost, or the costs that are extended without a value proposition back that you can monetize. In this particular case, AMI and metering, the cash register of your utility, does create a value proposition, a payback. And so when we get to the point of putting it on the street, we want the market to validate our assumptions. So we estimate capital cost and so forth, and the market tells us that through their response in procurement. And then we analytically rank the responders based on different things they bring to the table. And ultimately, we got to three vendors that were shortlisted, Itron, Mueller Systems, and National Meter. And you can see that their rankings, a little bit hard to see, is between 510 points to 400 points, with Mueller Systems being the highest ranking at that stage. And so it was an analytical process of the procurement and selection committee made up of city staff and our team. In summary, the pricing for this did end up being as estimated, or slightly below. And the good news about what happened in pricing is that we estimated your full cost of implementation at 4.4 million, with a payback period of nine years. And that is a very conservative payback period, but we do believe to err on the side of being conservative. The good news about this is we were not anticipating that we'd get quite the level of functionality in that 4.4 million that we ended up getting. The preferred vendor, the recommended vendor, Mueller Systems, was very aggressive in pricing their remote disconnect meter, and that allowed us to get higher functionality at essentially the same cost. And what that means to your folks and to the community is that responsiveness on turning on a meter or turning off a meter happens, because it can happen at the office, happens a lot faster than rolling trucks, and it's a lot more efficient. And so we're excited that the solution actually is a greater design solution than what we originally had expect, and you're getting 100% of those residential meters as remote disconnect meters, meaning that you have that option 100% of the time for those small meter customers. And you're getting brand-new meters across your system, which means they're going to record more accurately, they're going to be within those parameters of 99% to 101% accurate, and will perform well over many years. So you see the project summary in terms of cost. The planning estimate was 4.1 million. That's ahead of the soft costs like project management contingency. The final pricing for Mueller was 3.7 million for a difference, or favorable difference of 374,000. Now, we'll tell you that about $200,000 of that was negotiated reductions in pricing. So we get vendors across the table, and we have, because it's a technology bid, we work very hard to get the absolute best price for the community. And so when you add on the program contingency, we recommend a 7.5%. We don't anticipate using that, but we'll have it in the project budget if we need it. And we'll work very hard to make sure that we only use that for expansion of function and not anything within the existing scope. And then you have turnkey program management fees, and that's where our company comes in. And we'll spend the next 24 months, two years, we have six consultants in a variety of different capacities that do IT and systems integration, do network, do quality control on the install, just run the project for your team, because your team's already busy doing other things. And that is a commitment to make sure that not only you get the meter system that works, but you get it working in a way that is fully leveraged. And that gives you a program total that's, again, below the estimated amount of the feasibility study. Very quickly, on the program management side, we do these steps in terms of involving our folks in delivery. We have field crews that do support install teams. We have software folks that work on the integration, and we have QC and QA folks that do this every day. And then you see the phases of setup and integration and network install. We'll test the system in its entirety before we roll it out to full production, and then we'll make sure that we close it out in an effective way where your folks are trained, and we've got good, solid workflows that replicate or represent the change in technology so that they're gaining those efficiencies. So it is quite an endeavor and a holistic approach to the community or to the project. The other thing I will say that's vitally important is communications. And so making sure that customers and internal staff are highly informed throughout the process on the value of the project, where we are working, in particular in the community. Making sure customers understand what to expect before they see our folks out in the front yard. And making sure that we resolve issues quickly. Things do happen when we're touching, you know, 11,000 meters, and so we want to make sure that we have a mechanism in place that addresses that. I mentioned very quickly our team that were assigned for this project. Roger Solis will run all of our public relations and communications for the project. I am the program administrator. Lauren Brown, who's done a number of these projects, will be the project manager. We have Cassius, who does field operations for us. Lisa Wen on data, and Larry Bergman on the business process side. And Larry is 20 years in local government operations. So Larry knows about how it should look and how it should operate, and will align technology and the business process accordingly. And then Enrique on the integration side. The program timeline is, we hope to begin by April 1st, and you see the various activities that will go on. We'll do the integration and the network installation through July. We'll test through about September of this year. We'll do full deployment through October of 2020, and then close out, if all goes well, 21 months later in December of 2020. But we've embedded three months of maneuver room if we need to, to go to a full 24-month timeline. As I conclude, I just want to remind folks why the city would do a project of this nature. There's three elements that you must achieve in order to be successful, or we believe that local government utilities should achieve to be successful. And the first is operations, gaining efficiencies and standardizing your business. And I think that continual improvement environment that Scott, Radford, and others have applied in your organization will be mirrored in this project. So you've got predictability through standardization. Customer service is paramount. If the customer doesn't see an opportunity or a gain or a service value from this, we've missed the mark. We, as your consultant, have missed the mark, and we're not going to let that happen. We're going to engage the customer more proactively. They're going to be able to conduct transactions in an automated environment, get more information from the utility, and really be engaged. And the last but not least is that we should have a value proposition, that there should be, that we hold our capital estimates to those amounts that are estimated, that we improve revenues by registering correctly and accurately, and we lower cost of manual activities where we can automate. So that is our three goals, and we're committed to achieving that. Last but not least, we'll engage the customer through a customer platform, a customer engagement platform, which will be transactional, and it will be, will really put Lenore Water front and center to the customer, and really change the dynamic in the way you deal with your customers currently. So that's it. Be happy to answer. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Andy at this time?
I remember some of the discussions we've had at the committee, the whole meetings you've been. This is, and it'll help the public know this, this is what I would say a minimally invasive-type process, not a lot of disruption to yards and rights-of-way and things of that nature. Is that correct?
Thank you. Yes, sir, that is correct. The disruption of service is about five minutes, and so, and there is no disruption of the yard or around the meter pit. If there is, for some reason, if a water break occurs during the install, the crews are contractually bound, and that's why we have QC inspectors to make sure that they're doing exactly what that contract holds them to, which is repair as good or better than the condition they have.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Clarification.
Yes.
The Lenore presentation, this is supposed to be a sales agreement.
Okay.
That you had a presentation.
That may, that's a sales tax difference, I'm sure, and we'll get that reconciled. But the sales tax is reimbursable back to the city.
So the figure we have here is...
Yeah, if you want to go back and move forward, we have several items you have to go back and complete. The first would be to go back and enter a contract with Mueller for $3,654,097.34. With that, we'd further ask you to go back and grant the city manager authority to execute agreements on that, on our behalf. And then if we have any change, we would report those back at a council meeting to do that. That'd be the first step. The second step, we're going to go back and suggest you contract with a meter assist to go back and do the items he mentioned previously to go back, manage this process for the next 24 months until we get to the finished product. And that'll be a second motion with that.
Okay. Well, this is a project that helps us, as he said, gain efficiencies.
Correct.
Puts us into this century as far as how we're reading our meters, and it eliminates a lot of waste that we're experiencing. I think it's a very good product and a very good project. Did you need to add something before?
Well, the third item I was going to mention, we're going right now, we sent out a request for proposals for financing. We'll have those back probably at the next meeting, but we can proceed on with this because it's a process. We've got to get on the local government commission calendar, so that'll take place. But we'll have that to run simultaneous with this. So we should be good.
So you want to do this in two different motions, the contract agreement and the service agreement?
Correct. The first will be the contract with Mueller for the meters, and then we'll go back and do a second contract then with meter assists.
Right. I would like to make a motion that we enter into an agreement, is it Mueller or Mueller?
Mueller.
Mueller. Mueller, for the purposes of instituting these meters. And so after that approval, then we can take on the next motion.
I have a motion for, from Councilmember Purdue, to enter into a contract agreement with Mueller Systems as recommended, $3,656,097.34 is what the figure that we have on here with that. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
The next item is a service agreement, and that will be for a total price of $339,130. Again, that's the next stage of the project in about 24-month timeframe.
I would also like to make, to go in, coinciding with that one, that we make that motion to enter into a contract with this firm. He's done a very good job of helping a simple-minded councilman understand all this. I commend you. You've made this an easier process, by the way you and your firm have explained it, so...
Which one were you talking about, by the way?
Take your pick. I think you can, any of us.
That's right. You're very helpful.
But I'd like to make a motion we enter into that contract as well.
I have a motion for Councilmember Purdue to enter into the service agreement with meter assist, advanced metering solutions as recommended for $339,130. This is to undertake task order three, project management and implementation for the Mueller AMI meter reading system. Please have it. Anyway, any other discussion on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate it very much.
I appreciate it.
Radford, thank you for your work on this, and all your staff. I know it took a, takes everybody to make it work. Thank you, guys, for what you do.
My folks are really looking forward to this, and it affects the billing side, it affects the reading side. The network that will be constructed to run this system has other capabilities beyond meter reading, getting towards smart city type of applications. So there's a lot more to it than just reading meters, and that's one of the things that we really saw with this system that appealed to us.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
One last item tonight. We have a bid award for ballfield lighting at Optimus Park. The low bid for that project is $94,615. Camp Electric Company for that, they've had a lot of other work with the city and been a good vendor for us in the past, but they're the low bidder for that. And again, this is being funded by the Park and Recreation Trust Fund grant we received several years ago.
So you've heard the recommendation from the manager and staff for the bid award to Optimus Park. This is hallowed ground. We're glad that this was the first Little League park in Lenore.
And you were on the ball.
And I wasn't there. But I've been spending many hours there, but it's great that park is still here, and to have it lighted again is going to be fantastic for our whole recreation program. And actually, Community College will be playing softball, women's softball there on that field, so it's going to help the entire area. So we're very excited about that being done. So anyway, you've heard the recommendation?
I make a motion we approve.
We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Willis, who played on that park, I think.
I did. You were my coach.
I was your... You didn't have to tell that part. Motion for Mayor Pro Tim Willis to approve the bid award as presented for $94,615 to Camp Electric Company Incorporated for the lighting of the Optimus Park baseball field. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Look forward to seeing that. Anything else?
It's all handled.
All right, we will move on to recommendations from our city attorney, Mr. Blair. Your final chance from the chair.
I have nothing at this time.
We would advise you, Mr. Blair, to take your name thing with you when you leave tonight. Ed Blair, you can have that, your name, placard, whatever you call it, to have, as a keepsake at this point in time.
So you never forget who you are.
Never forget who you are, and that you serve the citizens of Lenore to the utmost of your abilities, and we do appreciate that very much. Thank you. I will then move on. I do have several board appointments, one board appointment tonight and several reappointments. To the planning board, I will recommend that Kay Reynolds be appointed to serve a four-year term on our Lenore Planning Board. Mrs. Reynolds will be replacing Mr. Merlin Perry, who recently retired off the board. This appointment was announced at our February 5 meeting. We think that will be a great fit. Of course, Kay brings a lot of experience to this position, and with our historic designation, which we did tonight, I think that's going to help even more, so we highly recommend that to you. You want to do that one, or are you going to go ahead and do the reappointments and do them all together? Is that okay?
Let's do them all together.
Okay. Reappointments, I'll recommend for the Lenore Tourism Development Authority, Mr. Matt Underwood; for the Lenore Business Advisory Board, the Sean Williams and Kimmy Rogers; for the Lenore Housing Authority, Mrs. Debbie Smith; and for our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Michael Dunne and Mr. James Robertson, all of which have been serving, have all been very good members to all these boards that they serve on, all would like to continue serving. They're all in the middle of, we have great projects going on on all these boards, and they're all, we keep up with their attendance, they're all attending the meetings, doing the things they're supposed to be doing, and those, our staff liaisons who are with them are all recommending that they continue serving, so we do appreciate. So I'll present these to you tonight for the reappointment and board appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the board appointment and also the board reappointments.
I have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to approve the board appointment and board reappointments as presented. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.[1775.33]